Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, November 20, 2023, and I call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please turn off your cell phones to silent or turn them to silent, and then rise and join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Burdy?
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Present. Thank you. We'll move on to our next point on our agenda. It's district honors, recognition, gifts, and introductions. Mr. Superintendent Smith, you have the...
Yes, good evening, Madam President and Board. Our first recognition is for Characterous Key is Ace Crocker here tonight. Okay, we'll hold. They may come in. We're going to move on to Ray John Benton. Might come in. Mary and Joe? Okay, might come in. Savannah Roach?
Savannah Roach.
Okay, okay. We got one.
Yay!
All right.
Take it.
Well, what you guys don't know is I have a list here. I'm just going to keep calling names until somebody stands up. So, it didn't matter, somebody was coming in. All right, so, up to the podium, please. So I'm going to read a little bit about you, where you stand there and take all these photographs.
I heard she's got feelings about you, too.
Mrs. Roach is an amazing addition to the Winton Woods Primary School. Although she is not new to teaching, she is new to our district, and we are honored to have her. She's a team player and wants to see our students thrive. She comes to work with a smile on her face and brings positivity to the team. Her student says she is nice, helpful, and she does fun stuff with us in class. Is that true? Okay. So, in order to be nominated, excellence, and she, the teacher must exhibit excellence in the classroom by using instructional practices that support higher academic achievement. She must motivate the students by encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations, both academically and socially. There must be leadership by having a positive attitude with students, parents, colleagues, and the community. There must be creativity and imagination by demonstrating creativity in teaching in a way that inspires students to learn. There must be dedication by showing excellence, attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability. And finally, there must be communication by communicating effectively to the classroom, parents, colleagues, and beyond. So, there must be excellence, motivation, leadership, creativity, dedication, and communication. And we're going to give you a chance, Ms. Roach, to tell us a little bit about each one of those. And you have 30 minutes for each one. No, you, just a few minutes, just, just to the podium, and just tell us a little bit why you, the kids in the, oh, and this is written by the principal, Ms. Plummer, who believes that you are an incredible addition to our team.
Well, thank you. I graduated from Winton Woods, so it's nice to be able to give back. And I just really enjoy inspiring the children and doing fun things. Like, today we had pumpkin dump cake because we've been learning about pumpkins, so it's just a joy to be here. Thank you so much.
Okay, I just want to be able to just hit on one of these. Creativity, give us something creative.
Create something creative?
Yeah, just tell us something creative that the kids are just like, "Oh, that was just amazing."
Oh, well, we enjoyed, we read stone soup, and then we made vegetable soup and had stone soup for snack.
Wow.
So that we can have a multi-sensory experience with the literature.
All right, well, let me know when you read their book, All About Steaks, because I'd like to, I'm going to come in, and we're going to have a great time. So, grilled steaks, and let me know when that comes up, all right? Okay.
Will do.
Fantastic. Awesome. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so who came with you tonight?
My husband, my daughter, and me.
Let's bring everybody up to, let's bring up everybody up for a photo. Everybody up for a photo. Everybody up for a photo. There we go. Here we go.
Oh, really?
Ms. Kuhn, can you get in there somewhere? I should have just said, "Audience, come up."
So, Ms. Kuhn, when you, when you have that picture at home on your wall, you'll say, "This is my family."
All right, very good. Ready? Does she come yet? Okay. Ray John, you ready? Okay.
Oh, this is, oh, this is Ray John, okay.
Yes.
So, this is Mr. Ray John Benton, Kiwanis Student of the Month, 12th grade. Way to go, senior. All right, come up, go up to the podium, please. I'm going to read a little bit about you. As we work with our students day to day, it is important to instill skills of leadership and community service. After speaking with Ray John Benton the other day, I learned a lot more about what he has accomplished volunteering in our community, even though he is not a student on my caseload. I'm very impressed with what his family has instilled in him and what he has gained academically working with school and community. Ray John spends a lot of time with Mr. Jermaine Hill, and We Thrive. He volunteers at the different activities along with his family. He is currently volunteering at the Forest Park, at the next Forest Park event related to the '70s. I've seen Ray John grow through these couple of years, and it was a pleasure to have a conversation and see how much he is, and it's hard to give others. I, I got to tell you, I see this young man in the school, and he is happy all of the time. Even when I'm, when I'm down, he must know, because he comes and gives me a hug, and he tells me it's going to be all right. All right. I remember when he came to school and he had the cass on his wrist, and I kind of joked and asked him, "Did a 10, 10-year-old girl break his wrist?" And I, I think she did, right? Okay, so, that was a true story. I don't know, maybe I had some ESP on that one, but he is like the nicest young man that you will ever meet, and we are very, very proud of you. And, you know, just keep the smile and keep all the positive influence going on, because you are a real, true warrior. All right, thank you.
Superintendent.
I just, I wanted to say, I can ditto that. So, I had the pleasure of meeting him a couple of weekends ago when he volunteered for the We Thrive 70 versus 80 party, and he came in, you know, there were no other kids except for one other, and he's volunteering with a bunch of older people.
All the time.
And he's, he's active and engaged, and so later that evening, he came, and he dressed the part with Afro and everything, and his energy is just so infectious.
All the time.
So, thank you for pouring into our community and simplifying the warrior.
So, how old are you?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. This guy acts like he's about 37 years old.
He is.
I mean, he is just always together, and I'm going to tell you, when, when young people transition on, sometimes you kind of see how they, how they work when they were here, but I'm going to tell you, we're definitely going to miss seeing you in those building, in the building every, every day. And I know Mr. Martin has the same, you know, sentiment that I have. So, go up to the mic and tell a little bit about yourself.
So, um, I go to Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. So, growing up, I always wanted to play piano. And I still do in church a little bit, but I kind of fell back. I haven't told my grandma or anybody why I fell back from piano. But I kind of fell back because my Aunt Kathy Johnson had passed away, and she was the one teaching me how to play gospel music and everything. And just growing up without her, you know, teaching me and everything, so I just moved forward and just keep the smile on my face that I can, make people day and everything. So, that's how I make my day as well, joking around with people. So, that's a little bit about me.
Well, you know it, bravo, because you make my day. So, it's time for a photo opportunity. Grandma?
Yeah, come on.
He says, "I can't go up here until my grandmother gets here," so we waited for her.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Awesome. Ms. Jordan?
Any other students come?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, President Kuhn, that's all for now. Somebody's coming in. Tell me who you are. Tell me who you are. Is this the recipient?
Yes.
All right, to the podium. So, since you're early, you get to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Right one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tell us who you are. You can't be that shy to be up to the podium. Come on. All right.
Hello, my name is Mari Angel. I am senior, and this is my last year. I play soccer. I am the captain of my team. My number of my team is number three. I want to say thank you on my coach. My coaches are Ms. Osborne and Ms. Leo. Thank you.
All right, very good. That was awesome. All right, Dad? Who came with you?
Yes.
Okay. Get a picture, please. Ms. Kuhn, when, when people see all these pictures on your wall, they're going to wonder, you just have an international family of all sorts. That's wonderful.
I am very.
All right, that's all.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, you sure, no one else?
No, I know, so.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations to all of our recipients. This is one of the most joyful parts of the meeting. I think I speak for my board members and my administrators, they, they appreciate the opportunity to celebrate the successes of our students and to see what they do each day. So that's why we're on the school board for our students, so we appreciate it very much. Thank you. So, we'll have just a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in a few moments. Thank you. Okay. We'll reconvene our meeting tonight, and we'll move on to our public comments portion. We do have one comment this evening from Mr. Bill Spiel, it's easy for me to say, Bill Spielman.
I got your time, Paul. I got her time.
I'm starting my timer.
Good evening, Board. Back in November of 2021, after some questions from the public, the Board asked the superintendent and his staff to repair a report back about achievements at 3rd through 10th grade. That was presented at the November 2021 Board Meeting by Dr. Ragland and Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin, excuse me. And I was just, it's been two years, we've been out of COVID, the superintendent, this is his last year, and I, and my whole point is, let's, could we redo that study and present it maybe the December or even the January Board Meeting, just to see how much we've improved, where improvements have been? It was done in November 2021, it's been two years. So that was my first question. My second comment is, I was reading on the Welcome to a Board Meeting, and it says, "The purpose of the hearing of the public is to give citizens an additional opportunity to bring their thoughts to the attention of the Board. All comments should be directed only to the Board. Individuals presenting questions should not necessarily expect an answer that evening. The Board will research your questions, and a Board member or administrator will contact you as soon as the information is available." I didn't realize that I was, that I would, I was hoping to get an answer to many of my questions, but I didn't, I never did. But now I found in, in this welcome that I should get an answer.
Mr. Spielman, most of your questions weren't questions, they were usually comments. So, I would like for you to go back and kind of look at some of the information that you brought up. They weren't questions, they were comments about certain things like scores and data and those things. So, maybe the way you may need to reframe your questions so that you will get the answers.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the response, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very much the intention of the Board to address any questions and to reply back, either whatever method is easiest to our public. So, thank you very much, appreciate the question.
In addition to that, Ms. Kuhn, so that the public understands some of the questions that have been brought to the Board, contacting, I know what Mr. Spielman wrote, read, but there's some revisions that may need to be addressed. The public wants to know, not in isolation, that when you ask a question, how are that, how's that question being received? And usually, it's back in another Board meeting, so the public can know how that question was addressed, and not as a private phone call.
Definitely, yeah, that's important, because usually, the public raises a question that many people have as well. So it is important to make sure we disseminate all information as readily available to everyone as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, so, appreciate that. We'll move on to comments from our associations.
The Opsy could not be here tonight, but they asked me to do my best to stand in, and they told me to just say, "Just happy holidays."
Thank you.
All right.
And then the teachers, if we have anybody from the Teachers Association?
Teachers couldn't be here tonight, and they asked me to step in on their behalf.
On their behalf, you'll accept the award.
Happy holidays.
All right, very good. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. So, Board, there's a need to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Treasurers' Report. Mr. Seymour?
Yes, for the, for the month of October, the General Fund year-to-date revenues were at $22.8 million. Month-to-date revenues for the month of October were at $4.4 million, which is mostly foundation, and we received a portion of our homestead and rollback. They now don't call it homestead and rollback, they call it the state portion of property taxes. I, I think Dr. Johnson read that in one of her legislative reports. Also, the year-to-date expenditures for the General Fund are at $17.8 million, and we're currently running approximately 3% under budget of about $1.8 million. On page, the last page shows you all the activity for all funds, and each fund balance is listed for you for your review.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Any comments? With no objections being heard, let the financial statement for the month of October 2023 be submitted for audit, and we'll move on to Treasurers' Recommendations.
Yes, your, for the investments for the month of October, we had approximately $35 million invested for that month of October. We earned $134,200. The General Fund earned approximately $117,500, and our Building Fund, which is still yielding interest income of $16,600 for the month of October.
Okay, Board, would you like to make a motion? We can ask any questions.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Questions, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move on to 8.02, which is the five-year forecast for fiscal years '24 through '28.
Bear with me, because I can't see the screen, so we'll, we'll go through. If I could take a little bit of time before we take the motion, I'll try to go over some key points of the four, five-year forecast for you.
Sure.
First of all, the five-year forecast is only for our General Fund. It's not for any of the other funds, it's only the General Fund. And each year, we're required to report to the Ohio Department of Education in the month of November, and then an update in the month of May. Our total projected revenues versus our expenditures for, beginning in '24 through '28, and historically fiscal year '21 through '23. For '24, we're estimating that our revenues will exceed our expenditures by approximately $600,000, which will, for the year, until, and it gradually increases, and expenses will exceed receipts by 2028 by approximately $4 million. The average annual increase in revenues and expenditures, historically, for the last three years, we've only increased by about approximately 1.64% over that average of the last three years. But as you know, we've been utilizing ESAR funds and special federal funding whenever possible, so that did reduce the expenditures. You also know that one year that, the employees did not get a raise, and we've held raises to a bare minimum. And then in the projected years, beginning in '24 through '28, revenues expected to go up about 4.5%, and expenditures by about approximately 6%. Our projected cash balance for the year is, for this year, is projected to be about $17.5 million at the end of the year. That will be an increase over last year of about approximately $600,000. And then our projected cash balance is expected to diminish through 2028 down to approximately So what is included in the forecast? For projected revenue, the total projected revenues for FY '23 are approximately at $57.7 million, up to fiscal year '28 of approximately $66.5 million. As you can see from the chart, the, the blue, the red, and the green are all property taxes or, or supported by state foundation property taxes. Basically, property taxes in the state fund approximately 95% of our budget. The other items are very small and are not really material in projecting of the revenues. What assumptions were made? I made the assumption that the fair share planning, funding plan will be in process and fully implemented through 2028. In all of our guidance and all the suggestions and all the meetings we're at, if we don't put this in, we're telling our legislators we don't need the funds. So, we have been asked by most of our, the Ohio School Business Officials and our organizations to try and include the fair share funding to show the state legislator that we are counting on these funds. So I have put it in, and it's being fully implemented through the year 2027. So for the first year in the new state fair funding plan are unrestricted, or the funds that we get to decide how to use in the best way that we decide, we will be at $22.3 million, and we'll have restricted state support of approximately $3.9 million. The total funding formula is, for the next slide, the $20.9 million transportation at $789,000, preschool $300,000, and casino proceeds of $244,000. These are the funds that we are not restricted on. Our restricted funds include student wellness and success of $680,000, disadvantaged pupil impact data of approximately $2.1 million, English learners of approximately $500,000, gifted of $165,000, and catastrophic grand birthment of $500,000. These funds that we receive must be spent on these specific targeted areas. So our state funding from '22 through '28 is expected to grow in this current fiscal year, $26.2 million, to FY '28 to $34 million. Of course, a lot of these funds are growing, growing are restricted. Annual increase in the state funding, you can see on the chart that each year shows the annual increase. In '24, the big increase is because the state updated the basic costs back to 2019 up to the current year. So that's almost a six, a five-year, six-year update. That's why the big jump in state funding. Then in '26 and '28, those are the updates of the biennium for the basic costs. And then that's why they show larger increases in those years. And they, projecting the state costs, basic costs to go up by approximately 4% per year. That's what the state determines as a basic cost to support an education of a child. Any questions on that? No.
I, I do have a question. I didn't know, you can go ahead and finish, and then I'll ask questions.
Okay, that's fine.
Other questions?
For real estate taxes, I've left in the reappraisal. Currently, the legis, the House sent it to the Senate, and the Senate has not acted on the revision of how to evaluate properties. So as of right now, it's kind of a dead issue, and there's proposing a different way to do it, and they're going to look at homestead and rollback by increasing and increasing the homestead exemption for perhaps higher income levels for those who are over 65. So basically, the reappraisal has been left in at 46% increase in residential properties. And that's approximately an $850,000 increase on a calendar year, only approximately $400,000 on our, our fiscal year. But as the property went up, our local capacity went up, so the state support went down. So it's kind of a twofold situation. All of our other, other operating revenues have pretty much been left constant, except with interest revenue declining as funds to invest also decline. As your cash balance goes down, your portfolio goes down. For our projected expenditures, you can see that our projected expenditures are expected to go up by approximately from $56 million clear up to close hitting approximately $7 million, $70 million by the end of the forecast. Salaries and benefits make up 77% of our budget. And the second largest section of our budget is purchased services. Supplies and capital outlay are minimal in our overall operations. But our purchased services include all of our contracts, our custodial contract, our utilities, all of our maintenance and repairs, special ed tuition, special ed support, OPPT, all of our things that are supported from the Hamilton County Board of Education. special ed tuition, special ed support, O P E P T, all of our things that are supported from the Hamilton County Board of Education. All the negotiated agreements have been included, all of our steps for all of the years through twenty-four, twenty-eight, and a modest cost of living increase has been projected to be more realistic on our five-year forecast. Our expenditure assumptions also include retirement and Medicare, which are associated with any salary increase, healthcare at seven percent, and dental at three. Purchase services have projected at a five percent annual increase. Fiscal year twenty-five will increase by approximately one million dollars by the return of expenditures from our A R P S R funds. And supplies and materials are projected at a three percent increase. This just shows a summary of the five-year forecast in millions. The line, the third line down shows how we will increase our cash balance by about point six million. And you can see that we start depleting our cash balance as we go through the five-year forecast. This just shows the revenues minus expenditures and shows the, the up and down shows the revenues over or under our expenditures. Here, we're just showing the receipts and our expenditures and our total funds available. The area between the green and the red is what our cash balance is at any given point. And you can see how our revenues and our expenditures have pretty much stayed in line until about F Y twenty-five, when expenditures start to outpace expenditures and start to eat up the cash balance, that area between that red and green line. And I just wanted to share, this has been updated by one year, and this is the percentage of cash balance of total expenditures for school districts in the state of Ohio. And for F Y twenty-two, Witten Woods is at thirty-two point eight. Hamilton County average is thirty-five, and the state of Ohio is at forty-five percent. And the next just shows a graph of showing where Witten Woods lies in the mix between Hamilton County School Districts and the state of Ohio. So you can see we're not showing large surpluses of cash balance for the general fund. That's basically the five-year forecast as a summary. I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can.
We think the Board has several questions. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion and...
I'd like to make, Madam President, to make a motion to approve the five-year forecast for fiscal years twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-eight as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Ms. Bryant, did you have a question to start?
I do. Just for the public, Mr. Seymour, can you explain what catastrophic reimbursement?
Sure. We have special ed students who cost the district in excess of thirty-two thousand dollars. When they exceed that threshold, we can apply to the state of Ohio for what's called a catastrophic cost of educating a child. It's usually a child who has tuition to an institution or a one-on-one aid or special transportation accommodations.
Okay, thank you. And that would be per child, thirty-two thousand is?
Per child, yes. We have some children that exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Did, Mr. Seymour?
I also noticed that there was a seven percent increase in healthcare cost, which healthcare costs were greater than purchased supplies and other things. So can you explain how that impacts our budget?
Healthcare, we're in the consortium, as you know, and some years, we're, we do better than the group, and some years, we don't. So our worst year, our worst two years were right around six and seven percent. So in the forecast, I utilized our worst years to project our healthcare, because healthcare is something that's highly unpredictable, and you want to make sure that you cover those costs. Our healthcare budget's five and a half million dollars for our employees.
Thank you.
I have a question that kind of goes along with that, with the healthcare cost. You were talking about the expenditure assumptions. Do you include that about with the healthcare? You said the raises and the increases, and I guess I didn't hear whether you included the rising cost of healthcare.
Yes, under benefits, I did.
Okay, 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 I didn't hear that part. And the other question I have, is there, what, what will offset the revenue deficiencies that we see like, in like twenty-twenty-eight? Or, you know, like, you showed those deficiencies. So what kind of plan, what do we need to start looking at to?
We'll need to start looking at a levy possibly with the next biennium. We will have to make, monitor the next biennium, which is in twenty-six, and make sure that they continue the fair share funding formula, because that's in our forecast. The, also, the, our A D M is constantly changing. And actually, since I did this forecast, our A D M has gone up thirty students. So that will improve our picture. But at some point, I've got to stop and prepare the forecast, because our A D M is constantly changing.
And, and just for the sake of understanding?
Average daily membership.
Yeah, but, Mr. Seymour, you have to alert the Board that the thirty students that, that you might be alluding to, some of them could be students with special circumstances.
Right.
That really change the cost.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a fluid number, so. It's different back in, five years ago, we did an October A D M count. It's ever-changing now.
Yeah.
Our E M A S department reports our student data almost bi-monthly, and it updates all of our funding constantly.
I want to say thank you so much for this robust report and making sure that we are apprised on how, what funds are coming into the district, how they're spent, and making sure that the public has an opportunity to see this as well and hear it, that the money is being spent where it needs to be spent, and here's the truth in advertising. You may see the money, you see, oh, they've got a million dollars, but as you can tell, that, that balance is getting closer and closer together, and we are not keeping pace with our peers in the state or, as well as in the county, and we do need to rectify that to keep our district moving.
Historically, I've never put cost of living raises in, but in realistic world, we, and we're doing a forecast, you have to put some type of cost of living in for your employees.
Absolutely.
Well, and I wanted to bring up that seventy-seven percent of our budget is salaries and compensation, too. Just like any business, any, any, that's the largest portion of any company's expenditures. And with more students, you have to have a certain number of teachers, and you have to have requirement of, of those opportunities. We want, we don't want to limit our students' opportunities with higher level classes and all of those pieces that allow them to be competitive in the market when they grow up. And the also, I just wanted you to explain a little bit more about cash balance and why you showed and averaged, why would we want to have a cash balance? And what is the value of, of the cash balance, keeping it on, on hand, just so that they're?
Well, historically, if you didn't have, I've seen where the state ran into budget problems, and they cut back two months of funding on us. I have seen where county auditors ran into a problem and did not, weren't able to get out, you know, real estate advances. Or I also experienced a year where the county auditor forgot to do homestead and rollback, and for this district, that would have been three million dollars delayed for six months. You have to count on things that you're not, just like in your own budget, that you're not sure about. And unfortunately, the state recommends sixty days operating cash balance.
Perfect. I just wanted to kind of understand that, that that's just not sitting there doing nothing, it serves a purpose and it's a value. And you said it depletes our portfolio as well, if we don't have that cash balance there, you said something to that effect, or?
I apologize.
That it affects our portfolio?
Well, yes, we wouldn't earn any interest income. But a good steward of public funds always tries to invest those funds as best they can, so, to help improve the revenues of the district.
Mr. Seymour, does the, does the cash balance have any effect on the rating that the district receives?
For bonds?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes, our bond rating, yes.
I just wanted the public to understand that, you know, you have to have a cash balance to look like you are a good steward of money. Otherwise, no one is going to invest in you.
Yeah, if we ran the district without any reserves or any kind of backup, we would be a disservice to our community. So it was important.
Yeah, in addition to that, Mr. Seymour mentioned about the percentages of, he usually doesn't put the cola in there, cost of living, but I think in his next projections, he may have to, simply because that gives the teachers, not just teachers, but the future staff to know, hey, what is this district looking at as far as increases where other districts are increasing? Because now, because there's a shortage, people are searching for the next best opportunity. And if you know a district is going to give a six percent, and you might give a one and a half, and you're taking care of a family, you're going to make some other decisions.
Right. We have to be competitive as a district to attract and maintain our, our talent, which is our employees.
I think, Ms. Kuhn, you just used the optimal word, competitive. The district has to be competitive. Otherwise, all this talent and all of the professional development, where you've sent teachers all over the country, and they come back and receive all these accolades, another district wants that.
Right.
That they didn't have to pay for.
I appreciate that. Mr. Smith, did you have questions or anything?
No, I just appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation, because I think sometimes the public doesn't really understand the business side of our district and what we have to deal with and decisions we have to make. And they may not agree with some of the decisions, but they don't understand why we have to make those decisions. A lot of those decisions are based on forecasting and, you know, dealing with state and county and city and things of that nature. So, you know, when things like, you know, a levy issue may come up, you know, they have to understand why we're asking for the money that we're asking for. And it's not because we need more money, just to be needing more money, but we have to run this business, the business of educating our students with, as our superintendent always tells us, with fidelity. And so in order to do that, we have to, number one, be good stewards of the money, but number two, we have to have the money to be good stewards of.
And, and you make a good point, Brandon, simply because the rating that we received, the good rating that we received had something to do with the cash balance.
Absolutely.
You know, you can't have a cash balance of zero and think you're going to get a, it's just not, it's just not working like that.
Try to buy a car with bad credit.
Yeah.
We know how that works for you.
Yeah, and?
You will get a car.
But you're paying high interest.
What kind of car are you going to get?
As you recall, we did a bond refinancing based on our credit rating.
Absolutely.
And we saved quite a bit of funding.
There's lots of ways to save money that the district, it's important that we save our resources, because we are good stewards of the taxpayer money. And one other piece with the importance of providing public education is the fact that these schools also provide back to the community with jobs and payroll taxes to the entities that they exist in, to Forest Park, Green Hill, Springfield Township. And that's another component piece, too, that they are also contributing back to the community with those extra funds back to the municipalities. So that's an important piece that I don't think is, is often overlooked by the community. Any other comments? Dr. Johnson, good?
No, good, thank you.
Okay. Without any other comments, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again for that very comprehensive information. And we'll move on to school reports from the super.
I'm going to skip the school reports and go on to the facilities update.
Certainly.
Because I know there were a few questions that people had about where we are.
Okay.
You already know my question.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Appreciate, again, the opportunity to provide an update on our facilities master plan and progress, specifically at the intermediate school, the former intermediate school, Future Early Childhood Center. We do have actually some notable updates for this month. Just to start with, as an overview, Phase One, which of course, just a review for the public that might be tuning in, was the H V A C system for the building, as well as the envelope to help enhance that A C system investment. Is it ninety-one percent complete? So we're approaching completion on Phase One. Substantial completion is, I believe, in January. Phase Two is a ten percent, is it ten percent complete? This is just by billing. And Phase Two is the other renovation improvements to the facility. I mentioned a couple notable milestones, one of which is, I feel like we need a drum roll almost, but the switchgear did arrive. It's installed.
But it doesn't work.
Not yet.
No, I'm kidding. I just had to put something in there. All right, okay, okay.
I was worried for Ms. Bryant when he said that. I was worried.
Ms. Hobbs told me to say that from a technology perspective, I didn't mean to do it, so, thank you.
Heart palpitations are real. But so that is in, it's installed, and it's just a, it's basically the brain of the electrical system. So in addition to that, the H V A C equipment that's added requires more power. And the good news is Duke does not charge for this, which is kind of amazing. But I guess they stand to gain in other ways in the future, long term.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed, yeah.
But Duke did begin the upgrade of the electrical system. It's a three-phase system, it's going from a two oh eight to a four eighty. And that's going to be completed by the twenty-eighth of November. Everything goes smoothly, weather holds and things like that. So those are two big notable milestones. There are multiple trades on site, we've got M E P, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, welding steel, masonry, abatement, glass, and glazing. So we've got a lot going on in the building. Still appear to be on schedule to open or have substantial completion in mid-June, which we obviously continue to monitor that closely, but that's exciting. The floor trenching for the restrooms for the preschool is nearly done and passed inspection. Construction of the E L A family spaces that each team has, there are four of those, those are actually underway. And you can see the openings in the hallway where it's going to appear, and very similar to what we have out here, to mimic what we have in the new construction. And finally, H V A C piping is approaching completion as well, so a lot of good progress, and it's exciting to see it, so.
So the central office is operational, but central office is relocated all over the district right now. So if parents want to call and try to inquire, try to get the superintendent, business manager, treasurer, et cetera, because of the change in the electrical process that they're using in order to power up the building, the East Triple C, central office had to power down, so we have no power. But we knew that. And so we're working remotely in different locations in the district for the rest of this week, and hopefully, things will be powered up. What we didn't want to do is to, you know, we want to show that we can be flexible, so we can work anywhere. We can work from our cars, from, you know, different buildings or whatever. We're not doing that, of course, we're working from usually the community building. But when we mentioned, I, I'm just trying to give a, just a quick narrative of the hospitality of the administrators in the building. We knew that we were going to be invading their spaces. So we sent out an email saying that, hey, listen, you're going to, we need to have a place for twenty-four people to work. They were all like, here's an office, here's a space, that's the kind of business you want to be in, where people want to be able to accommodate you and do it, because it changes the scope of their work, knowing that the superintendent's going to be sitting in their, in their hallway. But they're saying, hey, listen, we, we work this hard, and we do it with fidelity every day, so it didn't matter. So all of our programs, all the central office is dispersed for the rest of the week, so we wanted you to know, because we don't have power there. But that's just the functionality of who we are and what we do.
Now, how long will you guys be dispersed?
Just the rest of this week.
Just this week?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This is a short week.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we picked, this week was picked specifically for this transition. And it's working out to be, you know, to our advantage. And, you know, as I walk around slowly, looking in different rooms, everybody is very efficient, doing what they do. So I'm thrilled about that.
Very good.
All right, very good.
And still on track to open next school year, correct? The early education?
It definitely appears that way, and so if that changes, we'll let you know, because that's critical. But yeah, right now, it still looks like we're on schedule, on budget and on schedule.
But the building is going to be complete in June, you said?
Mid-June.
Mid-June.
It has the forecasted substantial completion date for, well, for both phases, really, for the, for the total completion.
Totally exciting.
We're getting that.
And they'll do all the moving in and all of that during the summer months and all that?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's, that's the next big project for, for us, is, is planning for the move.
Yeah.
Then he starts working on the demolition of another property.
Yeah, right, the work never stops. Yeah, right. The work never stops.
Master plan. Starting in 2011, and we're getting close though, 12 years later.
It's exciting. It's very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the questions and input.
Mr. Denny, Mr. Smith?
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, just at some point in time, I would really love a tour of the building. I know it's not.
Yeah, we, you can, but when you look, when you look up and see things just dangling, we need a hard hat. So we need to make sure that you have a hard hat. And I, I think that, I think it's very important at the board to get a tour like ASAP. I say within the, probably this, the next month.
Yeah, I, like I said, no rush, but I, uh, you know.
You do want to rush because, let me tell you. But here's the thing, once they start closing it up, you're like, hey, I didn't see the really good parts of it. And it gives you a chance to snap some pictures and say, wow, this is the, the changes. And I'm talking about a total renovation, not a halfway job. So, uh, the district should be very, very proud of the work. And the contractor that was selected and the, uh, the, uh, the way the workers are working is like top-notch.
Yeah. I just, you know, just working in construction. So I'm, I'm always inquiring on the work of what we're doing here in terms of construction. So I'll really be interested in a, in a walkthrough at your convenience.
Great point.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Can we schedule it for, um, where all of the board could go?
Let's, let's talk to, uh, let's talk to Superintendent Spalding. And see if we can get something, um, like by the end of the month. I mean, it, it'll be a, a time that is not a board meeting because I want you guys to really take your time and not have to rush back to a meeting. And we'd like to try to do it as, in November if we could.
Maybe like three days after?
Hey, listen, we're trying to do it when we can.
That's fine. Yeah, I just.
Appreciate it.
December's shorter than that.
Oh, I know.
It is. It's a blank.
I just want to see the switchgear, you know?
Well, you know what's interesting, Mr. Denny? When I was at the OSBA conference and I stopped around at some of the other booths and were talking to, to different people, um, in the same business of, you know, building and like that, they were also waiting on switchgears. So it's not, it was not like just us.
But there's only one thing that I want to do. I, I'd like for, um, Ms. Bryant to wear her most stunning outfit. And I want her to get a picture next to the switchgear. That would just, and that should just go all up and down I-75.
I know, like, man, it's here.
I mean, you know, you know how they used to do it on Price is Right?
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Absolutely, yeah.
That's what I want to see.
I, I do want to say, as you're giving this update, that it was such a joy when we were at OSBA to see the SHP, um, exhibit, and there's Witten Woods and all of the great work and this wonderful video of our students.
Never happened before.
Showcasing the work. No. So when people would ask where you were, you know, who are you? What, where are you from? I'm like, did you see the display? Go over there, you can see our building. So that was a great testament. I know that we're always working to make things better, but thank you for all of your hard work, both of you, and for those who were on the board before. And, you know, for the public for, um, having confidence that this was going to get down. We have some of the best schools around, so as far as with it.
That award didn't hurt us at all.
It did not.
No, it was, it's a beautiful award.
Yeah, it's a great honor. Thank you, Mr. Appreciate it. All right.
Um, when you get a chance, Mr. Denny, would you ask, um, Allison or Jeff Parker if we could get a, a small replica of that award so we can actually put it in one of our buildings somewhere? Or we can just kind of trade it around every three months or so? All right.
That would be nice to put in a showcase though.
Yeah.
Did you have any school, did you skip over or you want to go back to?
No, let's keep going because the reports are only going to be, we're waiting for all the second quarter reports to come in so we can give you guys a full scope for next month about how the GPAs work, how many kids were on honors. But I will tell you that, um, Mr. Martin in the high school was very excited that 51% of the students will reach honor roll status, which has never happened before. So, um, I'm excited about that. We pushed the envelope a little bit, Ms. Coon and Board. I asked him the question, and his, his comment to me was, are you ever satisfied? And he understands me. I said, okay, 51% made it, but how many kids were close? And so he's getting some new data about how many kids were close, which that number could be 64. So that, that's just a difference. But that's how he grew the honors diploma opportunity. He went in and to see how many kids were already eligible and then went back to say, hey, listen, if you took this, if you took this, took this, you could get there. Remember physics, right? Okay.
No, that's definitely, that was one of the important key pieces that you put in the play that, that was implemented, that was really good.
Let's keep looking because, you know, we can grow the program more robust than we ever did before. And let's never be satisfied. Let's just kind of keep moving.
And start a little bit earlier and get people on track. So, good. Thank you.
We have also had, um, there, I, I know when Dr. Johnson was first on the board, there were parents having concerns about, is my child going to graduate? Where do I stand? Since he recreated this check-in, checkout system and doing the early warning signs as early as September, we have not had any, none. Parents know exactly where their kids stand, which is a very good place to be. So, all right. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
We'll move on to personnel schedules.
Good evening. Uh, before you, you have schedules A, C, D, and E. There is no schedule B tonight. Uh, and I respectfully request that you approve them as presented.
Board, if you'd like to make a motion, we can.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, um, middle of the year, it's not as busy as the other parts, but thank you. Um, without any further questions, would you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, the resolution regarding National School Psychology Week, which is November 6th through the 10th. And Dr. Johnson has offered to read to us.
I will read it. I'm just starting coughing. I don't know where that came from. Okay, this is the resolution for National School Psychology Week, November the 6th through the 10th, 2023. Whereas Witten Woods City School District Schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that enables them to strive, grow, and thrive academically, socially, emotionally. Children's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development. And learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychologists are especially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning and help children to thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. School psychologists are trained to assess students and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize database decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes, and improve accountability. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the vital role of the school psychologist's play in the personal and academic development of the Witten Woods City School District students. Therefore, be it resolved that Witten Woods City School Board of Education encourages all district students and staff to join in the observance of National School Psychology Week, November the 6th through the 10th, 2023, and observance of future National School Psychology Week as declared by the National Association of School Psychologists, adopted this 20th day of November, 2023.
Thank you. Like to make a motion?
And I guess I can make the motion as well. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of National School Psychology Week, November the 6th through the 10th. Is that just right? 2023 as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Uh, any comments, questions?
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Coon, I, I don't know what board meeting I was watching, but, uh, they did the, the National School Psychology Week, and the board member actually sung the resolution. So, uh, Doc, uh, any interest in doing that?
Um, absolutely.
Okay, I'm just checking. Right. But she did a very good job. I know you have a very, very strong alto voice that you could just deliver that.
Very good. Yeah, we do recognize the importance to support our children intellectually, emotionally, psych, and their psychology as well as their emotional support. So thank you very much. Any other comments?
I just want to say thank our, um, current psychologists, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Butts, Mr. Gleason, and Mr. Lass.
Incredible group.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, very good.
So thank you, thank you for everything that you do. And we all recognize that since 2020, uh, the needs, the emotional and mental and, as well as physical needs of our students have increased. So thank you for everything that you do every day. Um, and we look forward to the continued service.
Hard getting school psychs, but I will say, uh, thanks to Ms. Bray for keeping them all ready, always encouraged and motivated. She is the supervisor of school psychs. So thank you very much, Ms. Bray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, Superintendent Smith to 10.03.
Yeah, I'm going to have Mr. Denny come up, but I, I just want to do a real touch point on, um, there was a small acreage, very small. I think it was valued about 5,000, Mr. Denny, that we located. We noticed based on one of the sites that was sold. And the contractor has no interest in it. We don't have any interest in it. But we did have to do an addendum, uh, for the purchase agreement. So that's what this addendum is. There's nothing you could really do with it other than let them put it into their, their design. They, they don't care about it. It's so small that it, it wouldn't do anything. Uh, based on hiring an attorney to negotiate it, it would be more worth more than, to the attorney than for us. So, um, that's why we, there's a resolution, but.
And that's at the Kingsbury Drive?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't that where the, the little, um, garden used to be? Is that the little piece of property down over?
No, that's where that bridge used to be.
Oh.
When you say that bridge, people know that bridge.
The bridge, the bridge.
Know the bridge.
We call it the Bridge of Terabithia.
The Bridge of Terabithia. That was your school? What are you talking about?
It's the Halesworth property. I just, I don't.
Oh, Halesworth?
Yeah, but that's okay.
Yeah, s- sorry. If there's any confusion on that, I apologize.
They list all, they, they have a conversation about all of them, the Kingsbury and the Halesworth.
Oh, okay.
They do.
The 28 acres and the 11, but then he goes on.
Yeah, and I should have probably pointed that out. So, uh, anyway, yeah. So it is, it is a very small parcel of property. Um, it was, it was missed early on by everyone involved. It's .12 acres. It's about the same square footage as a basketball court. Not the gym, not a gym, but a regulation basketball court. So it's small. It's located be- behind homes, and then it goes down into a swale. So it's actually part of a drainage basin.
And muddy, extremely. Yes.
Yeah. Uh, it's, I'd say over half of it you couldn't build on, like it's not usable property. So, um, it's landlocked, so it's a, it's a little piece of liability sitting there that the district had owned should something ever happen there that we can't even respond to to help maintain and keep safe. So it's really in the interest of the district and the taxpayers to, to move it on. Um, and the, the Miranda Homes has agreed to go ahead and assume that into the, uh, the, the purchase agreement. But there is an addendum that has to happen. And per board policy, as well as Ohio Revised Code, the, the board has to convey property.
There, there is one, just a typo on the street address or the street name Halesworth and the second, whereas it's, um, it should be H-A-L-E-S, just a little flip.
It's, one is H-A-L-E-S.
Oh, thank you. You're absolutely right. Yeah, we'll have to make sure we correct that. Thank you very much. Yep. Second paragraph.
The second, yeah, the second.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the resolution. That's absolutely true. So, so Board this evening, we would just respectfully, uh, request your consideration of the, uh, resolution and favorable approval, um, to essentially give signing authority to the treasurer and board president to convey this property to Miranda Homes via the existing purchase agreement as an addendum thereto.
And, uh, I don't know if we want to, uh, motion first, and then I have a follow-up question, but.
Yeah, we need to put a motion on.
Go ahead and, uh, Board, if you'd like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the addendum to the purchase agreement with Miranda Homes as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Um, and just so it's clear, because I, I just want to make sure I understand, is there two little portions, one in Kingsbury and one on Halesworth? No?
No, what you're seeing is a reference to the, what I would describe as the base uh, purchase agreement itself, which does involve both properties.
Okay.
So they're, they're basically, um, restating that the fact that this is an addendum to the purchase sales agreement of those two original properties. It is completely, uh, landlocked inside the Halesworth property.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question.
Very good. Other questions, Board? And just so we know, it's just a little small section that'll just be included in that Halesworth Drive for our best interest not to have any ownership of that little small piece.
Correct. And, and Board, I will share, there is some precedent for this. I was aware, I think in 2011 or 12, there was a similar piece of property down in a, a gully or hauler, for lack of a better term, uh, near the Damon Road, the former Damon Road School that the district still own. Same situation, you can't access it. Um, you'd have, you'd have to have an easement to be able to access it. And you can't maintain it, you can't sell it, there's nothing to do with it. So it's, from a liability standpoint, the best thing to do to protect the district and the taxpayers is to move it on to someone who can use it. So it's, there is precedent for this as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Very good. Um, any other comments, questions? Nope, seeing none. Mr. Seymour?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our legis, well, our educational reports from our board members. Dr. Johnson? For the legislative report?
Yes, Madam President, I did send the full report out to, um, each board member. Um, but the past few weeks, uh, have been pretty slow news with the State House with only a few committees holding, um, hearings. There was, um, the House Transportation Committee held hearings on two bills related to school bus safety. Um, then there was a handful of educational bills, uh, that were introduced this week. And, um, with the high school football playoffs going on right now, a bill affecting school districts in Ohio, um, High School Athletic Association ticket pricing at the gate for the postseason events to ban the practice of charging more for tickets purchased with cash. And the bill would apply to the school districts as well as to the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Also, in the midst of the battle over whether or not to rename and overhaul the Ohio Department of Education's current method of teaching reading, the Reading Recovery Council of North America filed a lawsuit over the bills banning the, um, three-queuing approach to literary, um, instruction and mandating the utilization of the Science of Reading method. We know that, uh, Governor Dewine is the one that is really pushing the Science of Reading, and his administration filed a motion requesting that the suit be dismissed. The three-queuing approach, um, is a model of teaching students to read based on meaning, structure, syntax, and visual cues. And, um, the Science of Reading method is, uh, opposite of that. The, the next thing was the long-awaited announcement from Governor Dewine to pick the new Department of Education and workforce. And that was announced and nominated Steve Dakin, a former school district superintendent. The nominee will go before the state, the Senate Education Committee for confirmation. And the Senate will also need to approve the administration's, uh, selections for two deputy directors who have not yet been announced, um, who will serve under, um, Mr. Dakin. Um, lastly, the Senate Education Committee will hold hearings for all testimony, whether it be someone in opposition, proponent, or any interested party on Senate Bill 162, a proposal to require intervention for students grades K through 12 who score limited on the state math and/or ELA assessments, and Senate Bill 168, which is a bill that has been dubbed as the Education Deregulation Bill. So those were the new things that, um, So those were the new things that were talked about in this past month. And that would end my legislative report at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Burdy did submit his report for the Great Oaks, so you each have a copy of that in your email. And we'll move on to agenda point, any board recommendations? I don't believe we have any tonight. We'll move to comments from the board members. We'll start with Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, I always have comments. Just as we consider the season of Thanksgiving, I want to say thank you to this board for dedicating their time, energy, and resources and expertise to the students of this district. Also want to thank our district leadership team, Superintendent Smith, the Directors of Teaching and Learning, the executive team, Mr. Seymour, and the team that assists him in the Treasurer's Office, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the instructional aides, cafeteria workers, custodian, and everyone who has impact with our students. Your contribution and support of our students and parents and stakeholders of the district keep the academic process moving forward. And while thank you doesn't always seem like enough, we just want you to know that we do appreciate what you do for us and for the students of our district. I want to also offer a special thank you to everyone who was acknowledged tonight. Seemed like we weren't going to get everybody, but we got three, so we'll take it. And we do appreciate the organizations that, our community partners who believe in our students and in the district and dedicate their time and effort and support to consistently building up and encouraging our students. I would like to offer congratulations to Angela Knighton and Bill Spielman as the People's Choice, who will be sworn in in January to join us on this board. We look forward to working with you. I want to thank and appreciate the district for sponsoring the board, along with others in the district, to travel to Columbus to Ohio School Board Association's Capital Conference last week. The workshops and the training were very informative and it helps develop the board by delivering practical solutions that can help our district governance and the teams to improve student learning and achievement. I also want to say that we are, you know, still in mourning and our hearts are heavy with this Tuscarara Valley Local School District, where six students were killed and eighteen were injured as they were on their way, I believe, to the OSBA conference. Again, I just want to invite everyone under the sound of my voice to come out and to support our students and to join us in our efforts to continue to build the Witten Woods City School District. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Bryant?
You know, I appreciate that Dr. Johnson always goes first because she says everything so eloquently. There is really not much else to say.
Sure there is.
Dudo, and thank you, thank you, no. I echo all of your sentiments and I do appreciate the opportunities that the, being a member of the board present. Thank you to all of those who showed up to support those who were honored today. I would also like to welcome our newest board members who were elected and to formally acknowledge what a pleasure it's been to work with our current board president, Mrs. Kuhn, and unfortunately, Mr. Burdy is not here, but him as well. Look forward to new opportunities at the new year in January. But for now, thank you all, have a great holiday, whatever holiday you celebrate. Please be kind to one another and remember to start each day and end each day with a smile. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just thank you, everyone, for your hard work and dedication and enjoy the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Smith?
Oh, the students would love to see more board presence at activities. When you come, they just want to take pictures and get excited. So the more they see you, the more they can appreciate you.
Very good. Mr. Seymour, you probably didn't want to say anything? Okay, thank you. I also did want to congratulate our new board members that'll start in January, Angela Knighton and Bill Spielman. So it's very exciting for the board elect, or school board elect members. Congrats to all those that participated in the fall play. That's a big endeavor and it's a huge investment of time for our students. It's a great opportunity for them to exercise lots of skills that will benefit them in the future. The plays, the sports, the clubs, these are all really important co-pieces that add value to our students' lives every day and to our community. But congratulations to those students as well. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and I appreciate the opportunity to serve everyone. Thank you very much. And I don't believe there's any need for executive session tonight?
No.
Okay. With that, okay. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you very much for tuning in.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.